Are you sure that thing records everything we say?
Once she pushes the button. Look out. So you're just gonna be everyone. Just around the corner before you know it.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Ready, huh?
I think there was a motion or second in reference to the office expense, the telephone, the mileage and conference expense and all items except the victim's service coordinator. That motion was on the table when we adjourned.
Yeah.
I don't know how we deal with that. I don't know what you want me to do. James made the motion.
I'm aware of it.
Yeah.
And why would there be any question about how we deal with it?
I just...
Well, you must have something in your mind, Judge.
I'm sure. I just didn't know how you wanted to vote on it or what... If you were gonna vote on it, what you want to do.
What should we do?
If you don't mind, vote on it. I'd appreciate it. If I had any choice, it's, uh...
Okay. What exactly was the...
It was the office expense for the county attorney... For the office expense for the county attorney was gonna be increased by... Up to $3,900, that's the record on it.
Yes.
It's an increase from $3,595.
Telephone was to...
$2,500, which is the increase of $500 from $2,000. And he dropped the move... Furnishings went to zero. And then the line item, $4,996, which is moving expense, was dropped to $1,000 from $1,250.
And then wait, added the copier?
Yeah, the copier was for $7,293. The Odyssey, uh, for the... I guess the conversion is $171,388. And another line item created would be $6,000 for, uh, management, uh, support and...
Maintenance.
Maintenance of the, of the software.
And for the Odyssey conversion?
For the Odyssey software, yes, sir.
And the mileage, conference expense?
That didn't change?
Thirty-six fifty.
Oh, it stayed the same.
Stayed the same.
Where's the new copy machine? What's that called?
That's for his office.
For Herb's office?
Yeah, they don't have them.
They haven't had one?
When we're in the courthouse, the third floor shared one, which was the county attorney and county judge, but once the two offices moved different locations...
Who shared it in that?
Uh, from my understanding of the original presentation, Herb's office comes in here to use this copier.
That's right. We're sharing. What does that need to change here? It's been that way for thirty years?
We, we certainly need one, Judge. We do a lot of copying because we have a lot of discovery that we need to get out. And that's something that's, uh, come about in the last year. And that's basically, we have to reproduce some files and send to the, uh...
I'm very well aware of it. I see every one that comes in here and makes copies of it.
Yeah.
I'm just curious. Nothing has changed.
No, well, I did... It just would help.
Okay. And I have written down seven thousand, $293 is that the cost of the new copy machine?
Yes, sir.
Is that... Did you... All right, what kind of copy machine is it?
Well, it's, it's one lack of... Basically, what you have here, I think is it's black and white. It's not a, uh, a color cop... Color copier. But Duitt Oath is one given to you.
Who?
Uh, Duitt Oath, who gave the estimate this morning to the, uh, the ag department. And that bid was July the 22nd, 2015.
What, uh, what was July concerned?
It, it, the bid...
Oh, you have a rule?
Yes, sir.
And I got a copy there for...
No, get it.
And there will be a continuing cost to us of $1,500 to, I mean, one and a half cents of cotton. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What kind of action needs to be taken, Herb?
I agree with you. The court just needs to vote on it at this time.
Vote on what?
On the, on the motion James made.
Do you have it here? Can you, can you vote on the motion that be made?
Yes, sir.
When he's no longer here? It is a legitimate motion. And there was a second, and I know we can, but I'm just curious.
He can't withdraw it, but he's not here, Judge. He's a resident.
We got him hung. We can defeat it, but he can't withdraw it.
That's right.
Okay, well, uh, does everybody remember what the motion was?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, pretty much.
Great. Y'all can tell me.
I'll read it again.
All right, read it again.
The office expense will be increased to $3,900 from $3,595. That's item, uh, line item, $3,100.
Wait, wait, wait. Who will be re... Say again, office expense?
It's gonna be increased to $3,900.
Okay, from the $3,595?
Thirty, from $3,595.
Yeah, okay.
The telephone is being increased from $2,000 to $2,500. That's $4,200, line item.
I see.
Furnishings, number 4822, line item, will go to zero. Moving expense, $4,996, will go to... From $1250 to $1,000. It's being dropped by $250.
You have to say it's be dropped.
Oh, Mr. Akon.
Hey, throw us a bottle.
Well, I'm just wondering why, why bother dropping the $250 for it? I... That's not gonna get you a place in heaven.
Well, it's hard to leave like it was, Judge. I don't...
That's the flea where it was. Uh, it just seems useless to me to drop one $250 and, uh, $337, $1,000.
I appreciate that, yeah. Thank you.
Moving expenses will stay at $1,250. The Odyssey conversion, which will be, be a new line item, uh, will be $171,388. That's a new expense.
To... For what?
For the Odyssey, the software program, the new conversion.
Was that much? Okay.
The... Another line item that will be created is for $6,000. That is for the software maintenance and tech support, whatever they call it. The annual maintenance and annual S.A.A.S. fees will be $6,000. A copy machine for the county attorney's office, another line item, will be $7,293. And after that, there are no further additions as far as I'm aware of. Is that right, Moore?
Correct. Since there was the change on the moving expenses, Shelby, are you making this a new...
I make the other motion. Should we send the other motion?
Yes.
What was the motion that's gonna be sent or trying to?
The one that James made.
What did James made?
That included the $250 reduction in moving expenses.
The $250 in what?
Moving expenses.
Moving... I don't have it written down, which doesn't mean it's...
Well, we had... Remember, the, the moving expense was gonna be $1250, and he had you drop to $250, to $1,000. And he says, why in the heck you wanna do that? Just leave it at $1250. So we'll have to... We send the other motion and come back with the settlement.
Was there an actual motion made?
Yes, sir.
All right. I don't believe you're worried either. I don't think you still have to rescind it.
So leave it at a thousand? So leave it at a thousand.
Leave it at a thousand, I most believe that.
Great. So there's a motion and a second.
There's already been a motion and a second to do what?
To do all those things.
To do all those things.
All I just read.
To do everything he just read.
Uh, I don't think... Okay, I'm a good... But I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, before lunch, James made a motion to, um, move the office expense from $3,595 to $3,900.
Okay.
To move the telephone expense from $2,000 to $2,500. To have moving expenses reduced from $1250 to $1,000. To add a co... A line item for a new copy machine at $7,293. To add another line item for the Odyssey conversion at $171,388.
That's $171,388.
It's $171,388. To do another line item for the maintenance on the new Tyler conversion at $6,000. And to reduce the furnishings from $2,000 to zero. James made that motion, Shelby seconded it, and then we took the recess for lunch.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? If they've not, uh, we vote all in favor of the motion to base all of the items that the court just read out, signify your support by raising your right hand. All oppose, same sign. I'm going to oppose it. Votes three to base it. One to oppose. Motion carries.
Now, do we want to address at this time the salary as proposed for the victim's services coordinator of $42,000?
Where is it?
That's in the county attorney's budget. Fifth line item from the top, line item number 1039. Half of that salary should be funded by a grant that the county has been awarded.
County's match will be $20,651.75. That's the number Herb has presented in his documentation.
But we have to budget the full salary because it's only reimbursed...
Yeah. It will be reimbursed $21,348.25.
How long is the grant in effect?
I don't have a clue, Herb.
It starts 9/1/2015 to 8/31/2016.
One year.
Say it again, Herb.
9/1/2015 to 8/31/2016.
So it's on the state's calendar year, not on the county's fiscal year?
Do what?
It's... The funding period is the state's fiscal year, not the county's fiscal year. So this position will start a month earlier and end a month earlier than the county's fiscal year.
It started 9/1/15 and...
End August 31st, '60.
You have to say we're gonna be a month out of skew as far as this year's budget.
Is there any problem with that?
I don't see one, though.
Is, is this... Excuse me, is this something likely to be ongoing?
It's something that the statute requires we do. It has to do with mostly with victims, uh, family assaults and victims in, uh, accidents where there's an application for, uh, funds for the Texas Attorney General's Office. It has to do with finding services for displacement of mostly the victims of, uh, family assault and dealing with those and the children of family assault, uh, counseling for, for them. It takes kind of a specialized person to do this job. It basically has to do with victims only, and that's something that is lacking in most of our offices. The district attorney in, in Florville had one. We tried to share one with him, but it's just, they've got so much to do, they couldn't do it. They help us oftentimes with the applications for, uh, money from the Texas Attorney General's Office, and they've got a fund set up to help some of our victims pay hospital bills, uh, uh, pay, uh, placement of their families in another jurisdiction away from the violence, that kind of thing. It's just basically a service-oriented job that has to do with victims of assault. If you have a DWI that hits somebody and it winds up in our court, those, uh, they, they apply for funds for those as victims to try to assist in motion. It's for the, the victim itself and the family of the victim is what it's basically about.
What exactly are our responsibilities, Herb?
Basically, our responsibility is to try to, uh, to prevent the, uh... The recurrence of family violence by working with the victims in the family violence cases, by placing them somewhere else, filing motions for protective orders, uh, they, uh, they assist in... A, a long time, but I've seen them place or work with families and moving them up to the other jurisdictions to get them away from the, from the violence. It's a... As you know, there's a lot of family violence cases that are coming through our court at this time, and that's the basis on which we make or they make the application originally when we start calling.
Do you, do you got a copy of this? Do you have one?
I've got one, Judge, but it's just one that I printed off of the website. You're welcome to take a look at it. Uh, I just have only one copy. Do you want me to make one for everybody or...
I don't need one.
Huh?
I don't need one.
It's, uh...
Well, I'd like to see one if we're gonna base one.
Okay.
My, my concern would be that, uh, the state comes up with these wonderful ideas and pitches you a bone in terms of a match or grant, and then a year from now, two years from now, they pick their bone up and you wind up with the whole cost. Is that...
Funded, demanded?
Yeah.
That happens occasionally. There's no guarantee that I... It's not gonna happen down the road.
If there's grant funds available, we can always reapply, but there is no assurance that we will be awarded any specific...
But once we enter the program, can we withdraw from it if there's no state matching money?
Well, I, I think it's just like, if you decide to not fund it, then the person who's hired would no longer work for the county attorney's office.
I thought you said it was a statute that, that required of you there?
There is a statute in place, but it's, it's kind of a made-type statute or, uh, it shall in certain respects, but... We've just been jumping around and getting other folks' touches at this time up to now, and we've not had any.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not disinclined to help you out with the thing. What I don't want to wind up is with a hook set in the mouth and, and no way out of it at some point in the future.
I don't think that that's...
The case.
I think you can get out of it by vote of the commissioner's court at, at any time. I, I think that's my understanding. And by the way, this was the, the application, the approval to make this application was in February 2015 when we did this. I come to the commissioner's court, Judge, over.
You mean we voted for it once, you're telling us?
Yes.
Okay. Oops.
Probably all of us, which includes me, but I never, I didn't know what I was voting for.
I vaguely remember now that he mentioned it, but I hate to say it, but this much goes over my head that...
Herb, has there been a, a center of this type active in Frito County? And our, our victims were referred to there or to other counties? One in Quarillo County, one in Frito County, referred to one of the, the four that just came about?
Uh, not up until... That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to coordinate with these other areas that have the victim witnesses now that can help us out. But there's other areas that I don't know what, where the county's headed because, you know, we're still in the planning stages and I haven't checked. Wilson County, I know, uh, is very active in that they, all of their family violence cases wind up in the courtroom. They won't give anybody any slack, even if the victim was dismissed. Uh, the Sahu County has a very active victim witness, and, you know, we share with them occasionally, we're moving victims around, uh, to protect them if we need to.
But this particular position, if I understand it correctly, is just a coordinator. There's not gonna be a facility in Karnes for this. It will be coordinating services for the victims, whether they need to be removed from their current environment into a protected custody.
And they, and they can find, uh, other houses or their places, safe havens for families of domestic violence in other jurisdictions, usually in the larger communities like San Antonio, Houston, uh, Corpus Christi, areas like that, that we can move the victims to to get them out of the, the line of fire for family violence. Because our family violence is the most dangerous thing we're dealing with right now. Folks getting hurt and killed, uh, that are living together, and that's what we're trying to prevent as much as we can. We don't get the real serious ones.
What exactly is our responsibility?
Our responsibility is to protect those victims from, uh, future acts of violence if we can, and to do whatever we can possible to keep them from being, uh, subject to acts of violence in the future. That's our primary responsibility.
So if we don't base this, what's our responsibility?
We have to do like we've been doing and the best we can, Judge.
I don't understand what that means.
Well, that means that we'll try to get somebody to help us fill out applications for grants. We'll have to get other jurisdictions to try to help us place victims, uh...
And you're saying that's what we're doing now?
Not as much as we should. We don't have the time, Judge. We are pretty well strapped for time with what, with personnel we've got. I do some of it myself. I fill out applications. We do protective orders, uh, and that's one of the things that the victim assistance coordinator would do. And the protective orders are one of the tools that's used by, uh, the law enforcement to try to help cut back on the family violence as much as we possibly can. And we haven't been using that as much as we possibly should have, primarily because we, uh... It, it takes a lot of time to keep up with those individuals who are displaced by, uh, acts of violence. They'll hide... They're hiding either from us or from the, uh, the defendants. Uh, it's just hard to keep up with them, and we have to have some too to do that, and now we don't have that.
And you're saying that this, the passage of this will give the tools that are needed?
Yes, sir.
And it will, it'll be done through your office?
Yes, sir.
How much is it gonna cost the county?
Forty thousand, it's kind of $150.
How much is that correct?
That's the amount of salary. There'll be the associated fringe on that salary.
You'll have to furnish a, an office, will it not?
Plus, plus on that... Well, it'll be within Herb's office, uh, on that salary, the county will be responsible for 100% of the salary on 100%. 100% of the benefits on 100% of the salary.
So it'll increase the... What you see here is the actual salary. The fringes are not included in this number here. But we just have to have an individual in our office.
Is that a question?
Yes, we could.
What happens if we don't do anything? We've been doing nothing, not even what's...
Well, I, I just hate to keep doing something, keep doing nothing, Judge, if we can make a difference or something.
Well, if it's family violence, Herb, if you have tools to take care of that, you can prosecute people that are guilty of that.
Well...
Can you not? Am I stating wrong?
Yes, sir. I can prosecute them if I can get my witnesses to come forward and talk to the juries or to the judge. That is the shortcoming of where we are now. The police officers can file the charges. Quite frequently, they file charges on both the husband and the wife when they go out and, and get involved. We don't have a way to separate out the facts and interview those individuals as best we can and determine whether or not one or both of them need protective orders against them.
Well, you have the same way that you prosecute other people in other cases, do you not? Am I saying that wrong?
I think family violence, Judge, is a little different. It's not as hard to get a police officer to testify in a DWI case or an expert to testify in a DWI case as it is to get a victim of a family assault prepared to go and testify against those who abuse him or her. And it's usually her that are, that are, uh, the subject of the family violence. We have had some men that have had, uh, have filed charges also. But the, the case is unique in that the victim is usually hard to manage in those kind of cases. And they're not hard to manage in our other cases, our thefts, our, our DWIs, our, uh, traffic tickets, or other kind of cases that we get that come through. Those witnesses are easily, uh, managed. The family violence victims are the toughest ones.
It also takes sexual assault too, that's what I mean.
Yes, sir. But we don't do very many sexual assaults because most of those are felonies. But the, the... Some of the minor, uh, s... Sexual type assaults, we, we get involved in because if some of those are classified as...
Well, don't the, don't the officers have tools in the, in the criminal law to combat this type of violence?
They do have the tool to put them in jail, Judge, that's about it.
Not just put them in jail, but to do some other thing.
No, sir, we don't have anything else.
You can find them, can't you, Herb?
I, I don't quite understand.
You, you can't, uh... You, you can't, uh, the courts can't find a person who's guilty of, of aggravated assault or sexual assault in a marriage or in a relationship?
Well, what happens, Judge, in those kind of, so many of those cases, the victim presents himself as, "I don't want to prosecute the case" or "I want to drop the case" based upon pressure that's applied to them by the defendant, uh, and it's hard. If they know, if the defendant knows that the victim is going to come forward and say, "I'm not going to prosecute", I can't punish that individual. Uh, the individual says, "I'm not guilty" and I want my day in court. Uh, and that creates for me an impossible situation if I cannot get the victim to come forward and stand with me to help me assist in prosecuting these cases. And that's where the, the shortcoming is in my office right now.
Well, you want to, you can make them come forward and testify, is what you're saying. I mean, say it like it is.
Judge, I can make them do a lot of things if I can find them. But they only have to get on the witness stand and say, "I don't know what's going on" and there's nothing I can do to them to make them do it. They have a, the victims will file the charge to get the individual away from them and two days later, they're back. The victim is out, the defendant's out of jail. The victim is living close to the poverty line. And the defendant goes and talks to the victim and says, and promises the victim the world. And she says, "I don't remember what happened" or "I want to drop the charges." Uh, and I'm left holding the bag on a lot of those cases. I don't like to do that because it creates- I, I know that that victim is saying, "I don't want to prosecute" because she-
Because that's what she would say if you were in that position. Every other thing, isn't that correct?
Fortunately, my wife has never abused me, Judge, but I-
You're a lucky man.
Yeah, you're right.
I, I agree with you on that, sir. But I, I guess, Judge, the bottom line is the victims in family assault cases are totally different from any other witness that you'll be associated with in the system because they're the ones that come forward most of the time and say, "I don't want to prosecute" because they are in a situation that's upside down at best and they have to live there and there's nothing they can do. I.e., if that victim assist coordinator could help us, we could relocate-
We could make them.
We could, we, no, we could relocate. We could move, we could move the victim somewhere else. We could have the, the victim witness coordinator go out and talk to this lady on a, on a weekly or daily basis to see and check on her, to make sure she's where she's at, what's she doing, seeing if there's something we can do to help her as far as her finances are concerned, as far as the, uh, getting help for her children, uh, doing things that, it's almost a social worker, Judge, but I guess that's the best way I can tell you that if we don't do something to segregate out this set of victims, it's very difficult for them to, uh, to, uh, to come forward and assist us in prosecution. Let me give you an example, Judge. This last week, we filed a protective order in your court. Judge Saxton heard it, a temporary order, but the individual that finally comes forward with a request for the protective order had been assaulted by the same man three times. And two of the other times, she had come forward and said, "I don't remember what happened" and we had to cut the case loose. She came back the third time because he was in jail and she had the assistance of a grandmother who would help her, support her, get through the process that she's in. And you may know the grandmother. I, it's a Finney or something like that, but she, the assault occurred in the grandmother's presence and the grandmother pretty well held the hand of the victim. And, and we got down here and got to assault the protective order file. It's set for hearing next week. Now, whether or not we can get her back, because I have not had contact with her since we filed the charge. Whether or not we can get her back, that is an issue that, if, if I had the coordinator, that coordinator would talk to that victim probably every day or so as a part of that, his or her responsibilities. And keep that victim comfortable with what this victim is doing. That is, I'm going forward, she says she needs to get a divorce. I help her, uh, tell her, you know, how you get a divorce, uh, what's necessary. We don't encourage divorces, but if that's what it takes. In this particular case, she says she wants to get a divorce. We give her the names of three or four, five lawyers that do that kind of work. Those kind of things that are just a direct need for that victim that is not so in a lot of the other cases. Uh, we have, for example, a person in a car wreck that got hurt and they had $3,000 worth of medical bills. We didn't know anything about it until the case had already been disposed of. But if we had a victim witness coordinator, they could pick up that stuff and help us locate those medical bills and make them a part of any plea that we do. And a lot of times, we don't pick that stuff up because the, when the, when a police agency files the charges, we usually catch the case with an defense report that says the victim had injuries to his face and hands and stuff like that. Some of these victims don't go to the doctor till the next day. So it's very difficult for us to catch all of the, the, uh, the costs involved to these victims. And we can, the Attorney General's Office has a fund that's available, Judge, that will pay a part of the medical bills of these individuals if we can fill out those applications and get all of the documentation to the Attorney General's Office. So that's all a part of the process, but most of it has to do with the, the family violence issue.
And, and your off, does your office regularly send in something to the Attorney General to get y'all done, do they?
No, sir, we don't at this time.
And so that's, I'm not real sure.
We, uh, we should, but we have just not had the, uh, the, the personnel to do it at this point.
You've got a system? You've got, what, three, four secretaries?
Three secretaries, yes.
And y'all don't have enough to do all the work you need to do?
Well, I could use two more almost the time, Judge. It's not, uh, that is just a lot going on right now.
All right. Second? I don't have any other questions, Judge. In your court? Is this part of the DA's effort as well? Is he trying to help create some of this?
No, the district attorney already has one. Yes, I-
I'm trying to remember all this.
I'm not sure who it is.
That works, that works in this county?
Yes.
Yeah.
And she's been helpful about getting us to the right spots when we ask for her help. But she just, she's like everybody else. She's loaded and gilled and we try to share it, but we can't. She's, that's what she wants to do.
Where, where does she work?
When she comes here, Judge, she goes down to the, to the end of probation department and I can find her down on court dates is when I usually can get her.
She doesn't have a regular schedule when she comes here?
Just on the dates, the day I'm court, the district court is when she comes.
Okay, we've, we've been awarded this grant, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we have. The grant was awarded to us-
How much was it?
Judge, I believe it was, uh, the grand amount was $21,348.25. And the, the grant had been awarded to us and this morning, when I talked to you about the, the, the one that was explained to you, I was set out. Eva told me that it was number one on the list as far as the points. It pushed it up there to the level where it was needed. Uh, I was not present at the time it was presented. It was presented in a written form and I wasn't present. I don't, they were made of my presence when the grants were, it was presented in writing and all that.
For one, did you have a party?
No, sir, I did not.
Why, actually?
No, sir.
Are you about to talk to your master or is that?
Uh, Alyssa acquired some numbers from me as far as financial numbers when she was doing the application or assistance with who she needed to talk to, but other than that, I was not involved in the application.
Is there any responsibility of the county on spending funds in this matter?
We will have to meet the requirements of the grant and the funds will be, if it's like most grants through the governor's office, the funds will have to be spent and reimbursement requested.
Have anybody showed anybody down here what our responsibility is?
I haven't seen anything with this grant, no, sir.
And I don't think I have either. Okay. Any other comments or questions or? Well, I guess I'll make a motion, go ahead and, uh, fund the victim service coordinator for $42,000. The county match will be $20,621.75 and the grant amount is $21,348.25. That total is up to $42,000. Nothing, uh, if you don't find a victim's coordinator, well, I guess then just that position is there. If we approve it, but I'll make a motion, we approve it.
We have to advertise, we have to go through the, the advertising process. I don't have anybody in mind or I don't know of anyone at this time.
Who does the advertisement?
I think you, I'll prepare the, uh, job descriptions for the Commissioners' Court. You'll probably ask y'all to advertise it.
Put on the county website. Put on the county website as well as, for the citizen of local people.
I believe that, uh, there was actually a job description prepared by the Salary Survey Committee for this position. So there is one in existence.
Where, where is it?
You have a copy and a binder in your office and I also have the binder.
Did you know where mine is? I don't.
No, we located it.
You're welcome to go back and look at anything you want to.
We located it.
Unless you don't leave the wrong impression if it's here, let's get it.
Would you like me to go get it now?
Sure. Well, my co-husband doesn't want to waste the time.
No, I just dropped my pen.
I know what you did.
I dropped my pen.
Improper, had a meeting like this.
Well, I don't know.
Well, yeah, you know better. Do you, she, you do it, let's do it. Show her.
I can show them all.
I, I would second Shelby's motion that we fund this. We accepted it when it was, when it was proposed to us and we were, we believed that it was a worthwhile situation that time. So I second that motion.
That, that what now, say again?
Said I believe it was worthwhile when we accepted the grant at that time. So I'm seconding Shelby's motion to fund it.
Did we, what did we do to accept the grant, Pete?
We voted in the Commissioners' Court to accept it.
We, we voted to ask for it, then we voted to accept it?
I don't think so, just to ask for it, huh?
Uh, I'm not sure, no.
I think we accepted it because the Bureau conducted training for the Sheriff's Office and other, other, uh, law enforcement agencies within the county.
Did y'all live there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sir, I believe that's a part of the job also that they do. They do training for the law enforcement.
Yeah, they, they brought everybody in and had two sessions, one for, I believe for the public as well as for law enforcement.
I'm not going to further confuse the issue. Um, I was looking, the next three line items down are secretary salary, administrative assistant and secretary. And I noticed, I believe, that Mr. Hancock has moved all of those to the maximum on the salary table from the middle, midpoint. Uh, not wanting to shortcut him in any sense, but if we left those where they presently are, we would save spending about half of the match on that grant, about, not quite half, but probably a third of it, $7,800, give or take a little change. By the time that $20,000 gets rolled, it's probably going to become close to $30,000, but anyway.
Not to further confuse things.
Well, why not?
But the total cost of the county, including the associated fringe on the full salary of $42,000, the total cost of the county is approximately $36,478 based on this grant.
Oh, $6,000 sharp.
Oh. Thirty-six, did you say?
Thirty-six, four seventy-eight, approximately. Real approximately.
And the grant, total grant, seven, forty-two?
Total grant.
Twenty-one, three forty-eight, twenty-five.
Say again, I'm-
Twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars, twenty-five cents.
They can do that.
Feel such a-
That's the state's half of it.
Because I was just a match for, for the salary itself. The fringes were added to-
The whole total would now be twice that?
Yes, because they're only funding a portion of the salary of the position and then we're required to provide all the associated benefits with that position.
If, if this has been asked before, pardon me for not paying close attention, but this person is going to have to travel and move around, are we going to have travel and other related expenses stacked on top of this?
I don't think so. I think that most of the stuff, we didn't provide for any travel because we thought we could do most of it in county. And that was a part of the job, you know, job responsibilities. Like, if I go somewhere, I don't chart, I can't chart for in-county travel.
Yeah, I mean, is it going to be administered out of your office, Herb?
Yes.
And that will mean the hiring of somebody else to administer this program?
Yes, sir. And we'll use the existing staff that we've got now to work with this individual in doing the necessary paperwork and assist that individual in any way we can to make the program work. Uh, we did not plan on a, any assistance for the individual. We made applications for the grant. We thought we could do it without any additional personnel.
Okay, and so you will not be hiring anybody additionally to work in your office over there?
Besides those court-
Before, before this other business individual.
Robert, does the Sheriff's Department have- Robert, does the sheriff's department have anything to weigh in on this with?
It's a good program. I mean, uh, I mean, you're talking about, you're already talking about the, the social worker.
The vic, victim service court.
So, I mean, it's, she's good. The lady that was here before came and she talked to all of our people, did in-service training for all of ours. And it's a need that the county has had, you know, needed in the past, so it's been good as far as that. I think it's worthwhile for the county to invest in that position, Commissioner. To answer your question, because we always get a lot of those type cases come across through our department and then to hers. So I think between the both departments, I think it would be beneficial not only to us, but to the citizens. So we do see quite a bit of that, so. Sheriff, do you want to add anything to that?
The only thing too is if you lack resources, they'll easily provide them for you. The, the good thing about it is that individual will make contact. I think for some reason, the, you need to have interviews done. A lot of the times, individuals that they hire will do all those arrangements for you. So, you know, like if the kids aren't in school or something like that, then they'll plan off, they'll do all that for you. So if you don't, so the officer doesn't have to set all that up.
So, so you're saying there is some, perhaps minor, but nevertheless, savings to the sheriff's department by this person?
Yes, sir.
There is a place in, in Torresville that we care some of our victims. And they're interviewed by some, uh, some specialists that interview children. Uh, and this individual does a lot of that.
Well, that's a child advocacy center, they deal mainly with small children, but this person deals with all ages, Commissioner. And so, so it would be, it would be beneficial to do.
Anything else? Court's hearing? All right, we'll move on.
You do have a motion and a second to approve that.
By whom?
Motion by Shelby and a second by Pete.
Okay, to approve the?
To approve the victim services coordinator with a salary of forty-two thousand dollars annually.
Okay, all right, uh, we have a motion and a second, so we will cut the vote out. Uh, uh, call for a vote, everybody, all that are for the, the establishment of, whatever this one is called.
Victim services coordinator.
Vic, victim assistance coordinator and the program to support that indicates your approval. By raising your rating. All opposed, the same side? Votes two to two, the motion doesn't pass. Okay. And we'll move on to the next thing heard. Do you have?
No, that's all I heard.
Other thing? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. May I be excused?
If you don't have any further business.
We, we do have these changes in salaries, so.
Well, the salary, I think, reverted back to what, to the midpoint.
Midpoint.
In, uh, whatever raises.
Plus.
The other individuals get this.
I'm, I'm not trying to, you know, put salt in the wound or anything, I was just asking.
Anything else?
I'm not aware of anything. Uh, is there anything else that heard?
Me, maybe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next department in the list is that of the county auditor, which is department four-nine-five. Line item thirty-one hundred. Currently has a budget of twenty-five hundred dollars.
What's with this many blood, so I'll find her. Let's see, we can. We have the finder. Is everybody?
You have one, David?
What's that? I have one, I just, I should have, I need just to find where I'm at.
All right, uh, go ahead.
Okay, line item thirty-one hundred, office expense is currently at twenty-five hundred dollars. I'd like to increase it to two thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Line item forty-two oh one, cell phone allowance is currently at twelve hundred. I'd like to reduce that to seven hundred and eighty based on the current billing. Conference expense, line forty-two, seven zero, is currently at four thousand dollars. I can reduce that to thirty-five hundred. And the bottom line item, forty-nine, ninety-one furnishings, is currently at zero. I would like to request five hundred dollars in that line item. And the purpose of that is to get a replacement desk chair for myself, two guest chairs for my office. My current guest chairs will go down to the first assistant and the first assistants will go to the second assistants because we have had broken chairs in the second assistant's office.
Y'all get angry and throw up or something?
Well, you'd be surprised. Uh, I know the discussion has come up before, as far as an additional position. I have a meeting scheduled with Judge Reyes. I don't know if Judge Wilson will be joining us for Monday, which we will be discussing those items as well as salaries, as well as the court's question from a previous workshop about the auditor's office assuming the investment officer's duties.
Just to remind everybody that y'all are appointed as a y'all and a member. And the people under you, uh, by the district judges, our two district judges.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, that's, we don't have any local control over that other than, uh, how you vote for district judges, when you vote. Uh, then, I'm not suggesting that there's anything wrong with that. Our judges do a good job and our auditor also does a good job. So, just so you'll know how it works, that's the way the auditor gets appointed and, um, she's totally controlled by the district judges, by the two. And I, I think they really, between themselves, have one that's kind of in charge of Corinth County and, uh, the other has other counties and, and the one that does Corinth County has other counties, Pete. And the whole system.
I will say that the commissioner's court does have the control over the expenses of the office.
Yes.
Other than salaries.
Well, if you, if you, the judge, the district judges will tell you if you need a third assistant or, or something else. How, how that come about, be your decision?
I will broach that subject with them and I'm sure it will be a joint discussion.
Well, I guess I'm getting, if you do, where would you put, put the assistant?
That will be another discussion with the district judges. That's all on our Monday.
Okay.
Discussion topic.
More than likely, she would put them where we made a pledge for. We would have to make a pledge?
Yeah, but I'm kind of figuring that building, where would you put one?
I don't know, in that building, we may not be able to.
The rest from that using our accounts.
Well, I'm just, you know, it's something to think about, because you can need additional computer and then another phone line, probably.
Well, not necessarily a phone line, but a phone tag.
Yeah, but, but, you know, additional.
But as of now, this is my request pending the outcome of our discussions.
All right.
Um, I'll make a motion, we approve the, uh, following, uh, amendments to the county auditor's budget. Uh, the office expense, twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars, telephone, fifteen hundred dollars. Cell phone, uh, which be down to seven hundred and eighty from twelve hundred dollars. Conference expense will be down to thirty-five hundred dollars from four thousand. And furnishings that are reserved will be increased to five hundred dollars. Is that correct?
Yes.
You, you said the, as if there was a change, the telephone fifteen hundred dollars, and that's what you?
I mean, yeah, I mean.
There is not being a change.
I guess I was, you know, you're correct.
You were just reading the lead of the statistic.
Yeah, and seven hundred and eight, I, I would, I would take that fifteen hundred dollars back. That's, that's remain current at fifteen hundred, but, but the cell phone was, was down to seven eighty.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Don't have to.
I was seconding that motion.
Okay, all in favor of, is there any discussion first of all concerning the auditor's? The, the adjustments to her, of her, uh, keep thinking of a little call.
Departmental budget.
Well, yeah, I guess.
Amendment.
Yeah, sorry, amendments to your departmental budget. Uh, any, any discussion from any of the commission? If not, uh, all in favor of the adjustments, raise your right hand. All opposed, same side, all voting for. What is the next?
Next is the county treasurer, department number four-nine-seven.
Anytime, uh, you got your.
Wait, Shelby, wait, no, you're making the printout?
Yeah.
And the, but not the, like my.
I made one that you gave us this morning.
Okay, I'm handing you her updated ones now.
Rahada off the press.
And I, I don't have that printout. What I have is my budget request this one.
You want a copy?
Yes, probably, maybe you're speaking and changing them. I just updated it from the last one that I brought in. Uh, the first three items were the salaries and those will be adjusted according to what the commissioners approved of already. I'm asking for a part-time clerk of twenty hours, thinking at thirteen fifty an hour to help keep up with the filing. Um, just various duties throughout the week. Office expense was amended on October twenty-fourteenth to two thousand. We only have the three thousand on that just because of paper, ink, et cetera, for reports that we have with the new system. Print's a lot more than what the old system did. Uh, telephone, seven hundred from last year to twelve hundred this year. And the reason I went to twelve hundred was because I'm asking that we move Elaine into what is now the storage room. And that would cost, there's, the phone line in there is already active. We're just going to have to order her a new phone, which would be three hundred dollars. And, um, there's going to be a service call on that, which is for two hundred and fifty dollars. If the court would approve for that move to happen this budget year, telephone could drop back down to the seven hundred. On travel, uh, two thousand from fifteen hundred because my trips are Galveston and Austin this year compared to San Marcos and San Antonio. Conference expense, same thing, went up two hundred and fifty dollars because of the early trips. I'll have to spend an extra night. I went to San Antonio, I'll go up that day, but going to the Galveston, I'll have to go the night before. I put a thousand dollars in there for conference for Elaine. There are some treasurers that let their assistants go also. She wouldn't go the entire time, but I would to Austin, but there may be something I think she should attend. Just want that option. Uh, computer expense, I don't need a new computer, but I put that in there because you never know what's going to happen. And then bonds and dues pay the same.
Well, you're saying three thousand for your office expense?
Yes, yes, sir.
But you already have exceeded that this year, is that going to be enough, or?
What's shown on your printout does not include the amendment. Her total office expense budget for this year is two thousand dollars. And so.
Oh, I got you.
Okay.
Good. It's two thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
And I increased it to three thousand.
And, uh, and what does it show as expenses for this year, office expense?
Three thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight.
Why would you not budget at least as much as the expenses were and, and they're not through this year?
Well, and actually expenses to date are three thousand, nine hundred, thirty-eight oh four.
Okay.
So thirty-one eighty-eight is over.
Thirty-three thousand, nine hundred, eighty-eight dollars and four cents, you said? Thirty-eight.
Thirty, and I questioned that because I didn't think I had spent that much money on office expense unless the printer that I had ordered went into that line item, which I will, I don't need a new printer.
Well, y'all get a new printer for the checks or something? Y'all were talking about that's been done?
Yes.
I, I don't understand the office expense figures, uh, explain, if you will.
Well, originally, with the adoption of the budget, this fiscal year's budget, I had asked for two thousand and it was only approved for seven hundred and fifty dollars. So I went back after October first and asked to put the two thousand dollars back in there. So I don't think that two thousand dollars is shown on this report, it's only shown seven hundred and fifty dollars, when actually it should be two thousand dollars.
There actually was a, an amendment?
Yes, sir.
Was that done in October?
Um, first part of October, probably the first meeting in October.
Fourteenth, maybe?
I think that's the notation.
But it says October twenty-fourteen, so I'm not sure the exact date. And you notice that I took out the furnishing and the equipment. Uh, Elaine and I looked at that office, the storage room, and she feels like it's plenty, big enough for her. Um, we have Lillana's old desk that's sitting out in the hallway, which she may need that now. But there are some desks upstairs that she said would be, she'll gladly take those. So we really don't need any more money, any money to remodel that storage room or for furnishings.
And this, would you?
On the very bottom of this says furnishings and equipment. I took that out on my summary sheet. The one on your, where your left hand just was. So I'd like to be able to move Elaine into that storage building, that storage room this fiscal year because there is money in the budget for remodeling for that, uh, building. We do have a painting contractor that gave us a bid for fifteen thousand dollars. I think we have like fifty thousand dollars. We could use some of that money. I'm, I'm hoping to get her, order her a new phone for three hundred dollars and a service call of two hundred and fifty dollars. That's all we would need to do to put her in that building, or in that room to get the telephone turned on.
I will remind the court, by action in January or February, the second assistant to the treasurer's department was added. And that was added as a temporary position through September thirtieth. So if two positions will be maintained in that office, that will need to be action of the court to include that in the budget. And I'll also remind you all the discussion you had last week or Monday of this week about HR and moving the payroll items to the H, uh, to the assistant, to the HR director and potentially moving Elaine to that position with her knowledge of payroll already.
I would, I would still like to keep two full-time positions in that office.
The temporary position was up to only September thirtieth?
Right, correct.
And that's just a tent that you have, you put it there, you put that position in, why?
Because I asked for extra help and I'd like to keep both positions. I'd like to keep. Because I asked for extra help, and I'd like to keep both positions, I'd like to keep both roles actually, Elaine, sorry.
Okay, a full-time and a part-time?
No, two full-time.
And you have right now?
Two full-time.
Full-time plus a part-time?
No, maybe not a part-time, I'm just asking for the part-time.
She's asking for that in this budget.
Oh, you're asking for the position of part-time?
Yes.
Okay.
So I have two, Elaine is full-time, Sylvia is a temporary full-time position, I would like to make Sylvia's a full-time position, as well as Elaine's position to stay there. Or have two full-time employees, let's rephrase that.
Which you have now, with one of the temporary full-time?
Correct.
Is that the one we're talking about, the September thirtieth?
Correct.
So, we're talking about moving HR, hiring HR. We're talking about having HR take payroll and HR insurance?
Insurances, policy manual, sick pool, payroll, benefits, workers' comp.
Do you want two full-time?
Yes.
Well, in addition, Pete, if we should ever get to the point where investments are taking out, taken out of there. Uh, and given to whomever it may be within the county structure, uh, I kinda think that, uh, the treasurer plus one full-time should be able to take care of the office.
Do what, Pete?
I tend to agree that she could do with one full-time position if we took HR payroll and business out of the office.
I still need two full-time people in there, there's plenty of work for two full-time people to do in there. I mean, I will, if you're not agreed to a part-time position, I, I don't have a problem removing that twenty-hour part-timeer position, but I need two full-time people in there.
I know there's been some some, uh, I guess, question is, we could, can you really move the payroll to the HR? Because I remember one time, I think we had a conversation about, it had to be a county official, and I don't think the, uh, human resources is actually a county official.
There's a attorney general's opinion on that, yes.
Yeah, and I was, you know, and I'm just, I'm just wondering.
It has, can't be, it, it has to be a officer, can't be a, it has to be an elected official, not at all.
Have you got a copy of these?
I gave it to you, sir, yes.
Today?
No, we talked about it here a couple of months ago, but I can get it again for you.
We need to.
Oh, Shelby, ask.
Does it say it has to be an elected official or just an official? Because I know there are.
A county official.
Which the HR director would be just like an elections administrator, just like EMS administrator.
It says.
An appointed official.
Here's a question. I know that, I guess the feeling is that the, the HR person, whoever did, could, the person could prepare the payroll and they wish, forward it to you for review.
Yes, everything that, I will not sign anything unless.
Yeah, and then it'd be another set of eyes, and then you would actually cut the check after y'all got together.
Drop in.
Typically, an HR person would not do payroll. Payroll in and of itself by definition is a financial function. Whereas HR is by definition a personnel function. Which would take care of insurance and things like that, payroll doesn't work with HR.
I'd have to agree with that, but it's commissioner's court's decision. I think keeping Elaine in my office and doing strictly payroll and keeping Sylvia with me, and letting her help me with everybody, all the other duties that I need to, we will be fine. But that's commissioner's court's, I think that we need an HR person because to take off the sick pool, the policy manual, we have people wanting verification of employment, things like that. But I think once we get the HR issue, this department moving and up and running, it can be revisited.
So what is the court's opinion as per Judge Long, doesn't matter if it's Supreme Court's?
I said I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I read that, it's not true, but we see. Which is true of that half, but this is attorney general, attorney general's opinion concerning, uh, payroll with officers.
And I know that the statute says that the commissioner's court has, shall, I guess, provide the additional resources to the treasurer. That, to fulfill the duties of that office, and that's one reason we gave her that extra person.
Correct.
Correct.
So that we're doing all we're supposed to be doing.
And I'm asking for two full-time employees.
You have one full-time now, right?
Well, one full-time and then make the, make the permanent, the temporary position a full-time position.
What if you're temporary working?
Two full-time, right, right, and one is, Sylvia is considered a temporary position, she's there forty hours a week. But that was only through September thirtieth, and I would like to make it come October first to full-time people, make her a permanent full-time person.
Shelby, you went to B County and visited with their HR department, did you not?
Yes.
And did they tell you that they have a director that makes forty-two thousand, an HR specialist that makes thirty-one five, and a clerk that runs the payroll?
Payroll.
And the same is in Wood County, I'm not sure about other counties, I know a lot of counties within the state. The auditor's department has an employee that runs payroll, I'm by no means asking for payroll, I do pretty much payroll A to Z, except for putting it in the system. Every pay cycle anyway, in my audit of it. But I do not see an issue with a clerical person under another department preparing payroll.
I think B County didn't have a treasurer.
Didn't have a treasurer, right.
But, but still, it's, it's another office that does it.
I'd like to suggest in that we seem to have problems with quite some time now regarding payroll. That commissioner's court consider a, an additional personnel position for the Waters office. To hire a person specifically to take care of and monitor payroll and, and just get it done.
Elaine's sole function in my office is payroll, that's what she does.
She also receives.
Well, she receives because I don't have Sylvia as a permanent position, so I'm not allowing her to receive. So once she's made a full-time permanent position, then she can receive things in. She's not, she's not even on the encode system.
I don't know if this bow will float, but, uh, would it be possible to, uh, give by one full-time? And how did, how was it termed last year when we added the?
It's a temporary full-time position.
A temporary full-time position pending what happens with HR, and that may not be something that can be done. But, you know, I, until that HR person comes on, I could understand that she might need two people. But if the payroll duties and all of that are assigned to the HR person, then I would think that she could go back to one, one clerk. So I don't know how to handle that in the grand scheme of things, but.
My dilemma.
Does anybody, do, our honorable sub-leader, do you have any thought?
I really need two full-time people in there, um, whether you take Elaine and put her in that position, that's something you'll have to discuss with her. I still need full-time, she, Lilana's got two full-time people in her office, I need two full-time people in my office, it's, it helps with the workload.
We are reducing, attempting to reduce workload by two major functions at some point.
But still, I'm, I'm still at one point that payroll is still going to come through my office for checking purposes.
So you have two people checking it now?
Yes, sir, Elaine does it, then myself.
And then it comes to my office and I check it.
And you check it again.
Question from Lilana, would it help if you might hire a person like Elaine? Would that function come into your office, would it streamline the procedure so the payroll is done swiftly and correctly? Most of her office received, she comes back and people pay.
Well, people are paid, so.
It would still involve the same process to an extent, Maurice, because when it comes to my office to be audited. I always return it with the identified errors for correction, and then those corrections have to be implemented, whether they are done under the auditor's office by Elaine or someone else, or under the treasurer's office. There's still errors that have to be identified, that are identified, it's still going to. Because all errors are not identified before it comes to me.
Or you, you're the last person that looks at the payroll each month? To see that it's correct before the checks go to where they go, and they go to their place.
Right.
So you're the ultimate person who says yes or no to the payroll check.
Yes. And again, that's a timely duty because I can't just spot audit, I have to audit in detail.
I understand that. How would it take for you to audit?
It could take anywhere from a full afternoon to a day and a half, it just depends on how many new employees come in on that cycle. Because then you have to check that everything's set up correctly, and all the line items are correct, the pay codes are correct, et cetera. So it all is dependent on the activity of that particular payroll.
A day, most of the time.
Therefore, one at you, if the district judge decides that you need to have a position there with that position, with that payroll being able to absorb on that position? Not a full-time job, you're saying?
No, I'm not saying it's not a full-time job to pair it and enter it in the system. It's a full-time job to do that, it's just right now, it's occupying more than a full-time position because of the amount of time that I'm spending on it to identify all errors. In other words, it's not spot-free when it comes to me, I'm still identifying issues. Uh, if there was an additional position assigned to the county auditor's office, yeah, it probably could absorb the payroll duties.
But the district judges would have to do that.
They would have to identify the need for an additional employee, yes.
Yes, and, and actually hire the employee?
Uh, actually approve the hiring, yes.
Yeah, okay, they have to agree. And there's not any way to transcend that to go around it? That I worry of, I don't, I don't want to go around it, but.
They, they approve the number of assistants for the department.
Yeah.
Maurice?
Yeah?
I guess the point that I'm trying to make is there's some way to simplify the system and streamline it. And I guess my next question is, does the county treasurer have to sign payroll or an appointed official?
I have to sign payroll.
Vi and I, the county treasurer, the county auditor, and our first assistants are authorized signers on the county checking accounts.
I mean, the object should be to make sure that our employees are paid timely and correctly. And rather than, and I'm not trying to kick up some dust, if you'd rather have a turf battle. There's an easier way or a more efficient way to do this and still achieve the goal of accurate checks issued. I think we, it should be explored, get through the way to do that.
I think we've explored nearly everything, Maurice. We are, we're not a bunch of dummies, although we may act like it sometime up here.
Not suggesting.
Uh, we understand the problem and, and have looked in solutions. I have for sure, as the judge, uh, other members of the court have, as members of the court. And we're concerned about it, and we're still concerned about it.
Well, I'm gonna pitch your big elephant out. What's been expressed to me as a concern, that if payroll stays in this office, involved in this, uh, court case that the county has against Ms. Malone, and I have no fuss with her. That she would use that as a defense, as I don't have enough time to do my statutory duties. Therefore, it has been suggested and considered that it was wise to move this out of there, so she would have sufficient time to do her statutory duties.
Well, HR is what needs to come out, and that takes up some of the time too.
I'm not fussing at you.
Oh, I know, I know, but I believe, keep Elaine and Sylvia in my office, Elaine strictly doing payroll, that would be her, her, that is her sole duty right now. She does do some receiving as well as I, but Sylvia in there to do all the receiving, Elaine does nothing but the payroll. And you have two full-time employees.
A lot of the HR does tie in with payroll, the benefits, et cetera, because the deductions have to come out, the reconciling of the escrow checks for the insurance billings, et cetera, so they are.
And Elaine can work with the HR assistant or the HR person to make sure that it's done.
In the absence of a HR person and a plan of action for that person, and in a hope that we can move forward a little bit. And it'll die for lack of a second if you don't like it, but my motion would be that, uh, that we approve two full-time positions for the office at the salary of thirty-one thousand three hundred. And, um, you know, if there has to be adjustment made, adjustment made later, that perhaps that could be considered.
Then is that keeping the payroll under the treasurer's office, or?
Uh, that, at this point, it's there, I mean, uh, if, like I said, I don't know how to adjust it, you know, if, if you, not if, but when the HR person is hired, if it's moved out. My own personal thinking is that, you know, those, the benefits, HR activities, payroll preparation should be moved to HR. And so I really think that this is too many positions, but she has it now, and until that can happen. Uh, of course, we have a few months till, you know, to wiggle by, so, you know, if that doesn't suit the court, it won't make me mad.
We'll tell you all in the salary survey, the job description for the human resource manager includes process payroll, including collecting time, preparing reports, coordinating tax payments, and distributing statements. That is included as an essential function for that position.
So they're gonna take Brenda's tax statement preparations from her too?
Tax payments, as in IRS tax payments and unemployment tax payment.
Yeah, because Brenda's placement.
I'll second that motion, the dividend is put on the table. Which we'll see what that means after.
Okay, I agree.
Oh, that is subject to taking a position out, payroll, payroll comes out.
That's what I would hope, but I don't know how to, that's what I say, I don't know how to do it.
I think you made earlier a suggestion of one full-time and making one, as it is now, a temporary position, subject to change later.
That, that was what I thought would work, but I'm not, I'm not knowledgeable.
But to identify a temporary position, you have to have a start and an end date on it.
Ah.
And, nothing against Vi, because every department would do this, if you budget her a full-time position, she's gonna fill it, and you can't take it away in the year because it's in the budget. Ooh.
So we're gonna say ten, might as well say a temp for this, the FY two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Because if we put it in, if we put it in there, there's no way to take it back out, we can't get it at the middle of the year.
And you won't be able to change that temporary position either, if you identify it as ten one through nine thirty.
It's there to stay for the...
For that to stay.
Let's, let's, let's throw a lot of if out. What if we say a full-time and a temporary from 10-1 through...
9/30.
No, through February 1 or something like that in time, in order to get the...
Half the fiscal year.
Half, yeah, half the fiscal year.
And then revisit it.
And then revisit it. Can that be done?
I have to compromise with that, yes.
I don't know if we...
I think it could be done, but you can't additionally budget more time in the next budget year because it's not unforeseen or an emergency situation.
But you have your contingency fund.
Could it come out of contingency? That was what I was thinking. Is that...
It could, but remember, when y'all discuss contingency funds, we have a lot of potential legal fees coming out of that because of the jail, because of this building.
And what?
Yeah. I, I want Vi to have what she needs, but if things change, surely there is some way that this can be structured in a manner that, that it would facilitate the change. I ain't smart enough to do it, but surely it's there.
Well, you're throwing out some suggestions and I appreciate that. So I think there was a motion made and second approved. Yes, David?
Do you wanna make it, did you make it two full-time? Did you make it one full-time and tap from 10-1 to 9/30?
Let's, let's address, let's address one at a time. Can you do that session-wise?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll rescind the former motion if I am allowed to do so and move that we approve one full-time Let's get that out of the way and then figure out how to do the second one.
I'll second that.
Well, to withdraw the other one, there was a second to the...
Do we need the, do we need the...
Withdraw my second on that.
Okay.
Does you wanna just let it die on the table, make it cleaner?
Okay, I think that probably needs to be done.
Okay, you tell us.
I think what James is saying is he withdraws his second to the previous motion.
You can't let it die though. There was a motion and a second. You have to take it over.
But right, let it go, but if nobody else dies, what...
There was already a motion and a second. You can't let it die. You have to call for a vote.
But it fails if no one else...
That's what, yeah. You can let it fail.
Right. Sorry, that's what I meant.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I wasn't saying anything.
Okay.
We'll have to vote on the original motion.
I'm not sure if it's right.
I'm not either, but I'm not gonna argue.
If there is a second, you have to vote. Can't move around the second, sorry, you made it. You cannot die because of my consent, but you made it, you made it, the second.
You could, it can, the second can be withdrawn. If there hadn't been any other action, then the motion will have to be withdrawn if the second's withdrawn. Or somebody else could, could second it. That's my mistake.
There's a commission court paper that made.
So do you wanna withdraw your second then?
If that'll work, either way it's gonna work. Whatever works better.
I'm sure anything's gonna work.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. I'll allow that and the original motion was made by...
David.
Who?
David.
Is this being withdrawn also?
The original, the original motion is withdrawn, Judge.
Okay. And so we're without a motion or a second?
Yes.
Start over again.
Start over.
I would move that we, at this point, allow one full-time position for the treasurer's office and approve that. That's the motion. Now, the addendum to that is when we get that out of the way, then let's figure a way we can get this second position covered.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that, say it again. I'd like you to say it again.
That we approve one full-time position for FY 2016 for the treasurer's office.
Everybody understand the motion and the second?
Yes.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. All vote for it.
Now, what, and I'm sorry to bother you, but what mechanism exists that we can make this second thing work?
Just make it another full-time position, 'cause that's what I'm asking for.
Well, but if...
We don't have to do that. We can make any motion we want.
Well, but I'm, I'm asking for a second full-time position.
Let me make one and then Judge tell me if it sounds correct. Go ahead, I'm gonna make the motion to have a temporary full-time position from 10-1 2015 to 9/30 2016.
Okay, you had said with the six years or...
At the treasurer's office.
We take this...
I'm, I'm sorry. We're talking about the treasurer at the county treasurer's office, Judge.
Okay. Are we talking about as long as the payroll is attached to the treasurer's office?
No, it is temporary. The temporary can be discontinued.
No, if it's in the budget.
It's in the budget.
The payroll leaves hers and goes to the HR. That's what we're concerned about. Just attach the, attach the position to the payroll. As long as the payroll is in the treasurer's office, the position follows the payroll. I think, is that not the concern? Am I confused?
That's, that's what we're trying to do, but there doesn't appear to be a legal way to do it.
I can make a suggestion and it's pretty close to what you're saying.
Or you're in H R.
I have been in HR before, sir, and I'm not currently...
I'm not really.
Okay, if you don't follow my suggestion, that's fine. I was just gonna make it.
Okay, thank you. I don't want it at this point.
Okay.
Okay, someone has started to say something.
No, Scott, I'm sorry. No, it wasn't attached with that. I was just gonna make it because we're not gonna be able to count it at the, at the middle of the year, so I was just gonna make it temporary, but we revisit it on the next FY 16-17 and if it's not needed then, we wipe it off and leave it there for...
Say the two for...
This year, that's not the one motion, but then...
Can the commissioners' court at some point in the interim, if you decide that the disposition, payroll needs to move to HRO, may you not amend the, what you proposed today?
What, what do you, did you make another motion, James?
The motion that I stated, yes, sir.
Okay, state it again.
Okay, see if I can remember what I stated. A full, a full-time temporary position in the treasurer's office between 10-1 2015 and 9/30 2016.
Say, say the date again.
10-1, 10-1 2015 and 9/30 2016, the next FY.
To, to solve your payroll issue, why don't you add the, suggest you add the $31,300 on there for pay? That was what the last one was.
With $31,300 and $28.31, say, 31 as payroll salary. Thirty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
Okay, Maurice had a semi-viable discussion topic here. Court has control of the budget, so at the point in time it's discovered that a different department can prepare payroll, then that money funding that temporary position or second position in the treasurer's office could be transferred to the HR department if that's who pays, will be preparing payroll, to the auditor's department if that's who would be preparing payroll, to the waste facility if they would prepare payroll, then the court has the control to move the budgeted monies for that position elsewhere.
And, and how does that, what's the phraseology you have to use on that?
I think Scott had something on it. If you tied the payroll clerk to the temporary full-time position, then you have an opportunity to move, move that person.
Has payroll to the clerk, payroll moves with it.
Move that clerk.
I still want two full-time people in my office even if payroll moves up.
We're speculating here. There's nothing said on the phone.
You guys said it's done. It's part of you then.
And my, like the way I made my motion, if it's done like that, then we know we can go through the whole year and we're not gonna have a problem. But the other way, we're just speculating. If we make a motion with speculation, then somebody can come in and knock it out.
If nothing happens in here, it's still good, but if, if you do make a decision to move that to the HRO or wherever you move it, you can always amend your motion. Thank you.
Well, at the point in time if the position is created to prepare payroll elsewhere, the court has budget authority and they can make a line item amendment, moving that position and salary out of one department into another department.
And you're gonna leave me with one person then and I want two full-time people?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
But why would you need two full-time people and payrolls out of your office?
If there's other things that that person can be doing, I need two full-time people in my office.
Okay, we heard you.
Thank you.
So what we have on the floor from James, would, would that be one of these reassignable things that we're talking?
Any position's reassignable.
Any position's reassignable.
Any line item is repositionable by the court, by line item amendment.
I'm, I'm definitely, well, anything you do is, is gonna be legitimate in the sense that we have a posted notice that covers it.
You mean an actual business item action?
Yeah.
Well, I know the agenda says action, but I think it does.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't describe the items or anything.
Budget, it just talks about budget proposals, discuss possible action on budget proposals.
And that's not what we're talking about. I don't think you, perhaps I'm wrong, but that's what I'm saying. I think we need to specifically post a meeting for budgetary, whatever we're gonna do about it and be specific about it to be sure that it's gonna work.
But, okay, if we, if payroll was moved out of your office and you're saying you still need two people.
Yes.
What would those two people, can you really tell us what they'd be doing other than the receiving and...
The receiving, helping with bank statements, we still have to do the quarterly reports for the civil fees.
What quarterly report?
There's civil fees, state criminal fees, 'cause those have to come from the treasurer's office each month when like the JPs bring us money, some of those, that money has been moved to other funds, credit card reconciliation, there's plenty of things to do.
I have a hard time believing that there's enough to do for three of y'all to stay busy all the time.
There is.
That's what you're saying.
Yes, there is.
Even if HR has moved out and the investments, if they were moved out, the risk management has moved out?
The risk management's already gone, yes.
Okay, what else we got left there?
That's it.
So that would free you up, that's three duties you wouldn't really have to do anymore.
And the investments sometimes can take half a day, sometimes investments can take a day. It just depends on what we're moving. Right now, we've got everything moved out pretty much. We've got some money in the bank right now that needs to be moved out, but other than that, it does really take a whole lot of time. It could take more time, but it doesn't take a whole lot of time. That's what Bob Ross is for.
How long does it take payroll daily or...
She, Elaine, she does something every day with it. If it's the accruals or new hires, people that quit, making sure they're terminated in the system, making people's enrollment forms for insurance.
But I mean, if it's strictly payroll?
Strictly payroll, yes.
But, so everybody turns in their hours on a certain day?
Yes, yes.
Right? Okay, so that's one day and then there's what, two days, try to get it all straight?
Yes, because we get the time sheets from the department heads and they're not necessarily, we've got questions on them. They may use March this as, we have, of the past payroll, we had someone to put administrative leave instead of holiday on it. We've had people turn in 81 hours and they use five hours sick leave when they technically only needed four, so we call them back. It's just checking all the time sheets. That's what Time Clock Plus does though, is then upload to the, once we get those corrected, we upload it into the system and it puts the hours in for everybody.
If James has a motion, should we give the treasurer's office a full-time temporary position, and I would say for payroll, for 2015-2016? I'll second that motion.
Okay, if you're specific to that, her assistant that prepares payroll now is her permanent full-time clerk or deputy treasurer and not the temporary position.
I don't think, I still don't think that we've got that posted as an item that we can act on.
So then we just table the county treasurer's budget request for now and come back to it when there's an action item?
We can, well, I think we have to do it. Can't we do the, the changes in that one except for the staffing? We're that much ahead of it, wouldn't we?
Well, that may all change the staffing then.
Yeah.
Judge. And I, I may be wrong. I've been here a couple of years and everything, but there's been, but I, and I may be wrong.
I'm gonna send the rest of them together.
I may be wrong, but from other years, if we're doing, if we're doing somebody's budget, just say for example, the county treasurer or whoever it may be, and they come in here with this piece of paper and they're asking for two or three part-time, as long as it's in there, we can make the motion on whatever they turn in to us. We may not have been doing it correctly in the past, I'm not sure, but that's what we've done in the past.
Well, it depends on what we've got posted for the meeting today, James.
Yes, sir. Then we're gonna discuss it.
I don't think we've got anything posted that's gonna...
But it won't, does it not be, it'll be in action till the budget is technically approved?
There'll be action when we vote it.
I was just about to put that in the budget, but then the budget would be changed, wouldn't it? I mean...
What you're saying, Shelby, they're all the last, the last ones still coming.
The fat lady having some.
Yeah.
Eight.
I think we're giving, what we're doing is sitting on one, giving her the tools she needs to try to put this thing together. Because we're gonna have to visit this all again.
We'll be visiting it all again once we have tax rates set and once we, well, once we know what values are, once we have tax rates set and before it's officially filed as proposed. There may be cuts forthcoming.
That's what I'm kinda getting at.
And, and maybe, I'm asleep at the switch or something, but we've been going through these all day and several days making decisions on them. And I would hope that we would not have been, done all of this for naught because of a posting situation, so I don't know. I'm not smart enough.
That's what I'm saying. As long as it's on this piece of paper, then historically, we've just gone by here and gone by what's going, either give it to them or not give it to them. I think we're okay with doing it, but not...
Let's go on and they can sue us if they don't like it.
If there's a motion on the table and there's a second.
There's an AG's opinion, letter opinion 98-013, and in the summary, it says the commissioners' court of Johnson County may transfer responsibility for preparation of the county payroll to the county director of personnel, signed by Rick Gilpin, Deputy Chair Opinion Committee.
And what year was that?
98.
And I think that it was a more current one that Judge Long had written.
I really don't think you can pick one of these opinions out of there and, and that's what you're doing when you pick one of, however you may find it.
And for what nickel's worth, I would, I would certainly support James's position. The first one we, you know, with me and rounding numbers, so I put whatever it was, $31,000 and 200, 300.
300.
300 on it, but I, I'm certainly in favor of going ahead and putting this part-time, full-time in and then perhaps amending the situation later and having to do it. And if, if it's proven that the treasurer needs someone else, hate to say it, but probably that should be addressed then.
Well, you know, all I can say is I, I don't think that that's what we need to be doing. And I don't think that what we've posted will support that. I did the posting and I'm fairly certain of what was posted. I did the posting, and I'm fairly certain of what we posted. I would really be hesitant to rely on this posting to justify the broad range of things that y'all are talking about. I don't think it will, and I think we're just wasting time. If you want to do this, you know, we're supposed to make a meeting and get with it. It'll be next week now before we can, we can get it posted, and it's probably before the public, but I sure don't see us being able to do anything else.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, with all due respect to all the court, there's a motion on the table and a second, and the only way they can come off it, we're, like, we did it in a while, if we withdraw the motion, you live in our ears?
I thought you made the motion.
No, well, he's the second, the third one, and the second one's in a while, to go first, and then that regular...
I think the second has to be with going in the first.
First, yeah.
I don't know what we can legally do, but we don't have anyone in the court to tell us, so, but I believe we had this same thing last year, and I think we can go ahead and put this in the place that it gets in there, just time, same practice, it's going to be right now.
So, you're not withdrawing your second?
I'm not withdrawing.
I'm not withdrawing my first.
Okay.
All right, we'll vote on the motion.
May I just be clear about the motion, please, again? James, would you, are you saying that, just want to make sure I understand. Your motion was for a temporary, full-time position for the treasurer's office from 10-1, 2015 to 9:30, 2016?
Yes.
With a salary of $31,300?
I had said 31.
31,328, 31.
The other, other one was said at 31,300.
The other one said 71?
Yes, 31,300.
Okay, well, that's at that one there. My marshal will include that, we change that from $31,328.31 to $31,300.
And, and Pete, are you seconding that motion? You're not tying it to payroll or anything else? I just needed to make sure I had it clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
I do.
Any, any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. Three, four, all opposed, same sign. You're voting. And two against, three to two, the motion carries.
So, do we want to go with the rest of my line items?
How was the, you had increases, increases, or...
Yes.
Go through them, if you will, quick.
The office expense went from $2,000 to $3,000. I will take out that part-time clerk.
Okay. It went, so that was a thousand over?
Yes.
An increase on that. Okay.
The telephone went from 700 to 1,200?
500 increase.
The conference expense went up $250. I added $1,000 in there for a lane.
Why was the telephone up?
They had, I need $300 for a new phone and $250 for a service call. And then adding another active line, I'm sure add another, some other bills. Computer expense, I put $1,500 in there. There was zero in there last year because I didn't get it to the IT person, but I think for, what are we doing with that?
It's coming back to the departments.
Coming back to departments, okay. The bond is $1,000, which is the same, and the dues $150, which is the same. I'm sorry, the bond was, went up $500 because a lane had to get bonded, so it's $1,000 for bond, for mine and her bonds, and the dues are $150, and that stayed the same.
Is your other person currently bonded?
We have, all employees have blanket bonds.
Okay, but I'm...
But your deputy treasurer here, about three years ago, the state passed a statute where our deputy treasurer had to be bonded separately in the same amount that we're bonded at, not in a blanket bond.
Okay, was the bond premium enough for all three?
Yes, well, the bond premiums come from, I think, the blanket for the whole employees, right, Warner?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I'll make the motion to have an increase on line item 3100, office expense from $2,000 to $3,000, that's a $1,000 increase. Line item 4200 on the telephone, from 700 to 1,200, that's a $500 increase. Conference expense from $1,500 to $1,750, that's a $250 increase, that's 4270. The line item, line item 4352, that was zero to the current, but you need $1,500 in that one?
I'm putting $1,500, just we have fairly new computers, but I'd rather put it in there in, in case we need it.
And that motion consists of what I just read, but that's not, no part-time, you had asked for a part-time?
Right, take that out. And I'm sorry, the travel went up from $1,500 to $2,000. That's line item 4260.
Also, in my motion, there's an increase in travel from $1,500 to $2,000. That's a line item 4260, that's a $500 increase.
Okay, then say them all again, because we have four different ones we've considered.
Line item 3100, from $2,000 to $3,000, that's office expense, that's a $1,000 increase. Line item 4200, from 700 to 1,200, that's for the telephone, that's a $500 increase. Line item 4260, that's travel, from $1,500 to $2,000, that's a $500 increase. Line item 4270, conference expense, from $1,500 to $1,750, that's $200.
And then we need to add...
$2750.
Yeah, because you need to add a lanes in there for $1,000 for a lane.
Okay, so that's an additional one, but it stays within the same one?
Yes.
Okay, so, let me refresh, on 4270, the conference expense, it's going from $1,500 to $2750?
Correct.
That's a $1,250 increase. Line item 4352, that one's just, it was current zero, we'll put it in $1,500.
Correct. And then the bond?
Okay, the bond doubled to $1,008?
Was $1,000.
It's $1,000. The current, we have in there 404.
504.
504, I'm sorry, 504.
Correct.
And it's still changed to how much?
To $1,000, because a lane's bond and my bond together are 500.
We're going to do it $1,000, but a lane bond and your bond together are 500, so we're going to do it for $1,000, is that...
Each, or each of...
You didn't say that.
I'm sorry, I misworded that.
Well, the current expenditures to date for both bonds is $979 in this fiscal year.
Is that for each one or both together?
That is the total for both positions.
And we can change it to 979?
979.
979 was the current year expenditures.
And they were for bonds of...
So, no, that's, that's nine, so it's not to $1,000, it's to 979?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make it from 504 currently to 979?
Yes.
How much bond is it?
It's $100,000 per person.
For certain named persons?
Yes.
So, Mrs. Friesen-Hunt is not one of these names?
No, she's covered under the county employee, I call it blanket bond, that's none of the others.
And how much is that?
I couldn't tell you because it covers all other non-specifically bonded employees. Somebody asked what the amount of the bonds are, it's $100,000, as is the bond for the county auditor, which y'all just approved that one in the last bill cycle for $350.
You can never collect on a bond anyway, so it's fruitless.
Do what?
I say seldom can you collect on a bond anyway. It's usually pretty fruitless.
Barnes County has in the past.
They have? They did good.
I made a motion, I think Pete seconded it. Or did?
Yes.
I was just restating, I said, you're second still with the restatement of it?
Or is that what we got? You want to say it exactly and make sure that you got it right?
He did.
No.
Oh, he did, okay.
I asked him.
Okay, okay, Judge, no problem at all. I already forgot.
Office expense from...
I got it, man. On this, the county treasurer, line item 3100, it goes from $2,000 to $3,000, that's a $1,000 increase. Line item 4200, it's from 700 to 1,200, that's a $500 increase. Line item 4260, that's travel, from $1,500 currently to $2,000, that's a $500 increase. Line item 4270, conference expense, that's, it currently is $1,500, we're increasing it to $2750, that's an increase of $1,250. Line item 4352, computer expense, currently we have zero in there, we'll put in $1,500. Line item 4800, the bond premium, currently we have 504. We're going at 974, that's an increase of 40...
979.
970, okay, 979.
That's what I heard, too.
979.
Okay.
James, you say conference expense, you say $2750 or $1750?
I thought it was $1750, I heard it as $2750, because there's an additional $1,000 for the other, the other position.
Okay, I missed that.
Thank you, Mr. ... It's a full-time temporary position.
A, the way the temporary full-time position is set up now, they get health, life, and LTD benefits, but they do not participate in retirement.
That's what I was thinking.
Anybody else see further discussion on the motion? I'll ask for a vote on the motion, all in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for it.
Thank you.
I move with you, Judge.
Okay, but now we need to...
Oh, no.
Now we need to discuss, because in vice request for the additional full-time employee, which was only done as a temporary full-time employee, whether that additional space should be renovated for the treasurer's office use, or whether it should wait until we see if, what assignments are being done with payroll duties, permanent full-time positions, et cetera.
I think that would be a lot...
I think to wait. And I agree.
Okay.
I move with you, Judge.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's unanimous.
Was it unanimous, okay. And everybody else moved it also.
We're going to continue tomorrow, we should finish it tomorrow?
Yes.
You can only stand so much fun at one time, James.
We'll be meeting at 9 o'clock in the morning.
I make the motion to the chair?
Yeah, we, we, we voted, we said...
Are y'all voters? Okay, good, all right, good.
Meeting at the JLP for one.
The city wants us to, not handle the issue of acting, and... Nani is supposed to have, Trent is supposed to have prices on what you might call, because change is called. The rent's going down, the tea, 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 the tea.